Call me and the North Reading School Committee to order for August 26th, our last summer meeting.
Yes.
Casual, and also probably our last meeting in this room.
Forever.
Forever. We'll be moving to the Selectmen's Room.
Pause for station identification.
Starting at our next meeting. And I've also been informed that initially, we will be, the meetings will be shown on the same channel as the Selectmen's Channel because the, this station, which is, I believe, Channel 22 on our system, cannot, we cannot broadcast live from the Selectmen's Office from this station. I think they're gonna work on it, get us back here, but, so we will be on, it's Channel 99, right? That's the Selectmen on?
It's different for Comcast.
Different for Comcast and Verizon, yeah.
I see.
So, yeah, they can check the, check the website for NORCAM. I also spoke to Rob Carbone, and he said they were gonna be putting out some information to the transcript and patch, letting people know, because I'm sure people would not want to miss one minute of any of our meetings.
Digital.
And they wanna know what station we're gonna be broadcasting on. That said, we'll get into the meeting agenda. First, public input. Seeing no public, there definitely won't be any public input tonight. Next, continued business. We have an update on the school building project. Kathy?
Yes, thank you. Last April, the middle school principal had requested a review of the design for the music wing. So, at our last SSBC meeting that was held on August 13th, the, it was made known that the designers are taking a look at converting two practice rooms into a general music room to accommodate a program expansion that we now have in the middle school. It's a good problem to have, because we now offer general music to our students in the middle school. When the design was completed, that was not the case. So, back in April, I know that the principal of the middle school had requested some information around what would it cost, what would it entail if we took a look at these practice rooms and created one lodge room instead of two small rooms. And we hadn't really heard back from the designers until the last SSBC, when they brought it to the general meeting and said that at the August SSBC meeting, we will have more information about this request that had been made. So, we were not gonna bring it forward until we had some more information about cost and to get a general sense of what that would be, but now it's become part of the larger conversation, so we'll proceed.
It seemed like there may be some minor mechanical changes required, but that it didn't look like it was gonna be too costly to make.
It doesn't seem like it's a big deal.
Right, extremely minor.
I hope not, but I really don't know, and that's the information that we wanted before we brought it to the SSBC.
But the way it sounds like fewer walls, but a change in where the, obviously utilities go off, you don't have a wall to put the utilities down there.
That's right.
But that's about, it seemed pretty minor.
So, I'm hoping that it's not going to be a big change, but I'm looking forward to the information that should come tomorrow night. So, in addition, in June, the high school principal, the middle school principal, the director of academic services and I toured two new high schools that had recently gone online. And in one of our tours, we noticed that the floor of the stage had already been damaged, and that was cause for concern. So, at the last Secondary School Building Committee meeting, John Bernard had asked for review of the construction of what's been proposed for our auditorium stage, and for that information to be sent to him and the SSBC for review, so that we can ensure that we have, you know, good, solid construction and not face what we had witnessed in one of the other schools that we toured. So, that, that should be coming also to the next SSBC meeting. Mr. Venatia, at this June, I'm sorry, at the August 13th meeting, brought forward the conversation that was held at the last school committee meeting that revolved around the change from the baseball practice field at the new complex to a varsity softball field. So, he talked about the key points that had been discussed at the school committee meeting, and then he made a recommendation to the Secondary School Building Committee to consider a vote to change the field. And following discussion, the SSBC voted to change the field on a vote of 15 to nothing.
I also wanted to report that you and I have had conversations, and also with Jerry, in terms of the dimensions for the field, and I know that Jerry spoke with the athletic director, and I think we're gonna keep the dimensions the same as they're at the current field, the little school, which I believe the contractor said will be helpful to them because it will likely cause them to encounter less ledge when they put the field in.
That's correct.
Because one of our concerns was the ledge that we might encounter when putting both fields over there, the practice, the all-purpose practice field and the softball field. But it looks like that may not, fingers crossed, be as big of an issue.
That's correct.
So...
Which is a good segue into my next topic. As you know, the student parking lot at the high school is now the site of the wastewater treatment plant construction that's going on. And on Friday, I was on-site and taking a look at just how extensive that construction is. And what has been encountered during that construction is a significant amount of ledge that delayed the installation of the wastewater treatment plant. Not significantly, but enough to impact opening up or reopening the student parking area on the right side of the gym. So, we will not have any parking spaces available to us at the opening of school on the right side of the gym. We've been, as you have read and heard, we've been facing decreased parking spaces. We knew we would have a decrease to parking at the opening of this school year. That's not a surprise. But because we don't have access to those 30 to 40 spaces on the, in the student parking area, we're faced with a decreased number of parking spaces available. So, there has been a reduction in the number of permits that have been awarded to students for the opening of this school year. As a matter of fact, it's been reduced by about 40 permits from last year to this year. So, as of today, 162 permits have been issued. There is a waiting list. It's called the A-Waiting List. There are about 32 students on that waiting list, and it was capped at 32. There may have been more students that wanted permits, but we knew that we would not have enough spaces to go beyond 32 additional parking spaces for this next school year. This is one year where we have to curtail the number of permits that are issued to students due to the construction of the new high school. And so, that is the status. Because we have 32 students on the waitlist, it was suggested that as a goodwill gesture, we offer temporary bus passes to students who are interested in participating in, in taking advantage of that until additional spaces become available. I'm not quite sure how many students have accessed the temporary passes, but we know it's no more than 32. So, that information went out to parents of the students that were on the waiting list as of the end of the four days that students had to register for a parking permit for this school year. So, Mr. Bernard has sent out several emails to parents, stuck, A, beginning with letting them know when the parking permit days were, and then following up at the very end of the first day, saying they all went on that first day of registration, and that a waitlist had started. And then, he sent out another email informing them that he was going to provide an opportunity to them to participate in a temporary situation, should the student choose to access that temporary situation. So, that's where we stand as of today. It is a challenge. It's the first major challenge of what I anticipate to be several more before the construction project is done. I'd like to say that the high school administration has done their very best to provide continued service, high-quality service, to the students, the parents, and the faculty of the high school. It is a challenge, it's a change, but I think that everybody's doing the best that they can at this particular time.
Ask a question?
Yes.
Has there been any specific pushback from parents and our students about how, about the situation in general to this point?
There has been a couple of questions that have come. I received a two-page email from a student this morning that I have to respond to, who is a senior, who is one of the first students on the waitlist, who's not happy, not happy. But in the scheme of things, I'd say the response has been minimal, but there has been some pushback.
And do you believe that the 32 people on the waiting, 32 students on the waiting list will likely be able to accommodate them before the end of calendar year 2013?
I think every attempt is going to be made.
Right.
Because that number was identified as 32, based on the original request for a certain number of parking spaces for this school year that we were told we would be able to have, based on everything that had been planned out.
So, we cut off the waiting, we cut off the waiting list of 32.
We cut off the waiting list, because we knew we could accommodate no more than the number that's on the waiting list.
Okay.
It could have been a lot higher, but there was no sense in putting more students on, because it's not likely they're going to have an opportunity.
Cliff?
Yeah, that's not the only accommodation this year. There's a limit on the number of fields that we have, one. And so, the sports are having difficulty in scheduling. There's, there's issues all around access and parking, and for events, it's gonna be even more of a nightmare.
We're already thinking about how we're going to accommodate the crowds for the Thanksgiving Day game. We're talking about hiring shuttles and shuttling people from different points around town to get them to the site, so that they can watch and participate in the Thanksgiving Day game.
I think...
And it's not gonna go away in a year either.
No.
Because we don't get all of those fields back.
No, not the fields. That's correct.
Until after this school is finished.
Right.
That's correct.
Right, we've lost a baseball field, we've lost the practice field for, that most high school teams practice on, as well of, as well as many community teams. Something we're gonna have to put up with for the next year or two. That's what happens when you build a huge project, basically on the same site as where your existing schools are. There's not much you can do about it.
It's really a challenge to have two schools in operation on the same site that you've got $125 million worth of work being done.
And on top of that, you have this central office on the site, recognizing every small detail and any issue that could go wrong.
And being challenged on every detail.
And so, you know, the principals, I think, are doing the best that they can in responding to the challenges that are in front of them. And there are some challenges that are going to occur that have not even been accounted for yet. But we are living on a very complex construction site. I've been involved in construction before, but it was totally off-campus. You know, we had to deal with all of the details, but at the end of the day, all we had to do was move in when it was done. That's not the case here. We're going through a phased project that's going to continue to present challenges to us, and I keep saying, please be come.
To wit, to wit, our temporary petitions right here in this room.
Our petitions in this room, which, as we walked in tonight, very attractive, but that's all part of the project.
It is, it is.
Part of the combination to keep this school separate from that school until this school can be worked on.
And to reiterate, our hope was that we would have some spaces available on the gym side at schools' opening, but because of the ledge, which required, I think, at least two weeks of blasting.
That's correct.
Or if not longer.
That's correct.
That's why we're behind schedule there.
That's correct. There was more ledge, and therefore more blasting, which modified the timeline. It does not stop the project or interrupt us moving forward, but it does have an impact on the parking. And so, I just wanna say, though, for the most part, everyone is understanding, has been accommodating. The professionals are working very hard. We walked the site again on Friday. We uncovered a few more places where we can put parking spaces. We're holding onto those right now to watch how the beginning of school opens up and plays out, but they're with us. When we say we need to walk the site, they are here, walking the site with us. Joanna Cripp, Jeff Blatton, the two principals, myself, and the supervisor of Building and Grounds, Wayne Hardecker, are really, they are putting in the time to try to accommodate all of the challenges that we're facing.
I think the idea of shuttles for not only the Thanksgiving game, but football games, is something you're probably gonna have to consider, because although, we're not home at Thanksgiving. Oh, yeah, we are home at Thanksgiving this year. But even, even after school, you have, you'll have varsity and JV soccer going on at the same time. You'll get 40, 50 cars from in-town and from visiting teams. We'll have to park for now over at the side where the teachers used to park.
That's correct.
And the teachers, a lot of, a lot of them will still be parked there when, so...
And I can tell you that our athletic director and John are working with the professionals, taking a look at the athletic schedules, and trying to come up with ways to mitigate some of the challenges around visiting team parking.
Okay. On a cheerier note, the last site visit that I took, I can report to you that the, the work progress is impressive. It's going at breakneck speed. The work is coming along nicely, and it's being done in a very, very professional way.
I'm excited.
Good, good quality work.
We're all going to, the SSBC is going to tour the site tomorrow at 5:30 PM. I mean, it's been a while since I've been inside, and I've seen a lot of the pictures that have been taken. The masonry alone is impressive. And now you see the concrete poured for all the floors, the roofing is, I mean, there's so many people on that roof during the day, and they're working at breakneck speed. It's impressive.
There's people everywhere on the site.
There are people everywhere.
They are up, down, and all around. In every direction, there's people working.
Any other questions on the building project?
Do you want to add something I left out? Is it missing?
Nothing happened.
This isn't related to the building project, it is related to construction, and I don't see it on the agenda. I wanted to get an update on the batch parking lot.
Oh, yes, yes.
Additional parking spaces.
Sure.
I figured it would fit well here.
It does.
Yes.
It's there.
It's there.
You have it, yeah, I printed it out too, but you wanna talk to them, speak to them?
Sure, so Wayne Hardecker actually sent an email out this morning, updating the status of the project, and in that email, he talks about all the prep work has been completed to add the 20 additional parking spots. The granite curbing is now in place, and the subgrating is complete. The next step would be to begin the paving process in this area, and that's gonna begin as early as tomorrow. After the paving of the 20 spots, it'll be painted and striped shortly thereafter, so that could be as completed by the end of this week. And then, the remaining task, obviously, would be the new fence and the landscaping work that has to be completed. So, that would most likely begin, you know, shortly thereafter, after the paving and the striping of the parking lot.
Because I, I spoke to Kathy today, one of the concerns I had is, without a fence there, the soccer goal is there, and there's gonna be balls going out into the roadway there. So, I, I mean, anything we can do to speed up the process of getting that fence in.
Right.
Because balls that go in the air are gonna go over, but on the ground, they're, they stop by the fence, so...
By the fence. So, just touch base.
So, yeah, I'll touch base, I'll let, you know, Wayne, I'll speak to Wayne on about that. They think, you know, within the next week or two, it should be complete.
Okay. Because I know they're practicing, but I don't think they start games for a couple of weeks, and most of the games on that field are JV games.
Okay.
So... Right. Okay, next, we have our 2013, 2014 school committee goals, draft of the goals. We had our goals meeting a couple of weeks ago. I think you came up with another phrase for, not goals, what did you call it? Not a plan, a, not a manifesto.
Charter.
Charter. You know, what we found is, many of the goals are part and parcel of what a school committee does every year. And it really does become almost a charter, if you look under policy. And then, on top of that, there are gonna be some, some one-time goals, like getting a school project completed, you know, hopefully in three years, that'll be, or two years, two and a half years, that'll be gone. So, I was gonna focus on, what I, what I'd like to do tonight is focus on just really the, the major new goals that we established. As I said, under policy, everything is pretty much status quo, although we did, the policy subcommittee and the school committee did complete a complete review and revision of the policy handbook, so that is not listed as one of our activities or objectives this year to complete that, because it has been completed. I think probably in another two years, it'll, we'll start looking at it again, and we're always adding new policies. And then, we have a couple policies, a couple activities on here that were on last year that we really didn't get to, which is one, and part of it has to do with the schools, the new school being built and the wireless infrastructure, which in our existing schools, we don't have a good enough wireless infrastructure to start implementing devices, because the wireless just isn't capable of handling all those devices. So, a couple of the policies that we'll be looking at this year are research and review handheld devices, policies and guidelines, and to develop a social media policy. And the other thing we're going to do this year is evaluate the implementation of the bullying prevention intervention policy. I think we're gonna have Patrick Daly come in to speak to us about that, right?
Yes.
Okay. Then, under strategic planning, we have the NRPS 2016 Plan, we're just gonna update that. This is an important one, and it'll be under the direction of Michael Connelly, and that's to evaluate the food service program and recommend the next steps, as the committee knows, and many of the public know, and many out in the public know. We had a large deficit this year, not unusual, many districts in the area had that, also had a large deficit, but Michael's gonna take a look at, I think he's done this before in another district, and evaluate what the best strategy is for us to follow, in terms of having a lunch program that serves quality food, but hopefully loses less money, I think is the goal here. So, under evaluation, under this, under the, we're gonna continue with our self-assessment process. I think it's been very positive for this committee to have that process. I think we've improved some areas where certain members felt we weren't doing as good of a job, from orientation to professional development, which we've talked a lot about, so we're gonna continue with that. This year is a challenging year, because we have the new educator evaluation system for the faculty, also for the superintendent and other administrators. We're basically on a trial this year, though, because we don't have to, do we have to participate this year?
Yes.
This is the first year for us.
This is the first.
Last year was the first year for Race to the Top District, so...
That's right.
So, we're gonna be evaluating for issue implementation of the educator evaluation system, and also complete the pilot of the superintendent's system by June.
Can we just mention, these are mandated activities that we have to do?
Yes, these are mandated. One of our concerns as a committee, and I know one of the superintendent's concerns, are the people hours and the staff time and money that's gonna have to go into these things, and how, and what kind of strain that's gonna put on the system. And again, this is, as Karen said, mandated by federal, state, government laws, and every district is, is experiencing this right now. Under media, there are a couple things we're going to, we've talked about expanding the number of articles that talk about the budget process, and Michael will be working with Kathy to do that. We had our first taping, I wasn't in town, but here it was a big success, the, the new cable TV show that'll appear on NORCAM.
I'm not sure, I haven't, I, I think they're in the editing phase right now, and...
You were the host, correct?
I was the host, yes. And we...
Is there music that goes along with it?
Well, that's a part of the B-roll.
That's part of the editing.
Intense.
We, we still don't have a name for the show, so it was suggested that we have a little contest to name it.
I got some great suggestions on my Facebook page.
Oh, I'm afraid to ask.
Do you remember the show, what was the show that Gary Coleman starred in? And he always used to say, what you, what you talking about, Willis?
I still do nothing.
Remember he said, what you talking about, Willis? What do you think?
I can't tell you what the administrative team has been coming up with.
No.
That has been said over and over.
And then, someone said the whole, instead of the buzz, what's the buzz?
Mm-hmm.
So...
There were some others.
Yes, there were some others that I probably don't wanna get into at this point, but I think a contest for the middle school kids would be good.
I think so. If they're creative, and, I mean, all of our kids are creative, but it really came through the middle school that they'd like to name the show.
And how often, how often do you plan, do we plan on doing that?
Well, we originally talked about once every six weeks, but I really got into it. I think we...
Oh, God, we created a monster.
I think it might be once every four weeks.
National media.
Yeah, exactly.
It's an actual obligation, so you know.
Is it, are you already plotting out your next, your future career, replacing Diane Sawyer?
Well, I don't know about that, but, no, I, we have a very healthy list of topics, so I don't think we're going to be at a loss for what we can, you know, put a show around, but, you know, I do anticipate that in the very near future, we'll be asking for members of the school committee to be appearing as guests on certain topics. So, the next topic is focused on the NRPS 2016, so I'm anticipating that the chair of the school committee will wanna be one of the members talking about that, along with Patrick Daly, who has responsibility for two out of the three major strategy areas.
My strong point is sports.
Well...
Right?
Yeah, and that, even that's not...
So, I think, I think it would be good for each school committee member to participate in, we could have more than one, one show, but it would be great to...
Voluntary participation.
Right, have our participation.
I do wanna say, the focus of the first show was just announcing that it existed, and also interviewing our, our two new central office administrators. So, Michael Connelly and Valerie Flynn joined me on the first show. I'm just too...
It's gonna be hard to top that.
I know.
It will be. There weren't a lot of visuals for that.
Exactly.
But it was, it was, it was much better than I thought. The staff at NORCAM were very accommodating in helping us get over our initial butterflies.
And do they say, they give you an indication when it might air?
Not yet.
Okay.
Phil said he would send me an email with the actual taping, and then, when it would be aired. We're still working on the B-roll.
Okay. And then, the last thing under media is to explore the use of social media to communicate school district news. Some of our schools are using Twitter.
Yes.
More so than others, and I think the goal here is to figure out how we can use it to better get information out about schools. Under human resources, this was one that Michael talked about, which is to explore the purchase of a DESE-compatible data management system.
Right.
Michael's gonna be looking into that. That relates to all of the data that we have to report to the state on a daily, weekly, monthly, annual basis. And then, one of the other things, and this is really important over the next year, is to determine the need for additional staffing and, I guess, services to support the opening of the, the new schools.
Yes.
Because we're gonna have to put that into our budget process for next year.
Would you like me to amend that to say, and services?
Yeah, I think, because services, there will be some things, I think, that will contract out, correct?
That's correct.
So, and the budget process starts soon, it's not too far away.
Calendar is in the packet.
She's always organizing this. Can you stop her?
I know. Now that she's got this TV show.
I know.
And then, finally, under professional development, we talked about creating a web-based internal school committee repository for relevant articles and documents, and I think that's something that would be great. It would give any member the opportunity, if they find an article, to upload it to a Dropbox or something else, and it would be there. We wouldn't have to be emailing things around, it just sits there, and anybody can have access to that stuff.
And can I get access to our Dropbox, so I can upload the social media policies I found?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, do we have, so, do we have?
Well, we have the Dropbox that we used previously.
Oh, right.
For school committee meetings, when you and Michael were receiving it electronically. So, I would think we could use that same Dropbox.
The issue is, though, if it's the free one, it's really limited in terms of the amount of things you can store there, and it'll fill up really quickly.
Oh.
So...
It's not that expensive.
I think it's like...
You can expand that, though, very nicely by large amounts, if you get other people to sign on.
Right.
Again, for the free piece.
Right.
And we get five members signing on for the free piece, you get quite a little bit of storage.
And I think for, I think it's like $99 a year, though, for, it's really cheap.
We have a school committee budget that, unless people are traveling this year, we could use a portion of that to support.
Yeah.
The other option is Google Docs. We've been using Google Docs.
Oh, yeah, Google Docs, we do too.
And that has really worked for us.
That'd be fine. I mean, you need a Google account, but it's, I think it's really easy.
You could set up a separate Google.
You could set up just a group or whatever, or an area for. Okay, so when you get that set up...
I will work on that.
Because I would like to see the policies. Okay. Cause I would like to see the policies. Okay. And then the last one, under leadership and governance, relates to secondary school building project, and it's mainly to work to get the project done on time and on budget, or under budget. That's, that's the way to sum that up. Um, under financial and asset management, they're really on a lot of new goals or objectives. We did change the, the major objective, which says now to develop a long-term plan and budget that reflects NRPS 2016 and future strategic initiatives. If, if anyone doesn't remember, we weren't able to put into place key parts of NRPS 2016 this year, including a new assistant director of technology, which we want to hire, and I think there were a few other positions. I know there were some things we were able to do by shifting money around the budget. I think the No Adam project, right, for, No Adam for grade five?
Grade five.
We now will have next year, this year.
That's correct.
And then we were also able to hire another tech person, correct?
Digital learning specialist.
Digital learning specialist, right.
Yes. A teacher that had been working at the Hood, who's very technologically savvy, and has presented at Mass Q numbers of times, has taken the position. So, we're very excited.
One thing I think we want, the reason why we changed that objective is we think it's really important that we get put NRPS 2016 into action, and, and not let that, again, suffer because of budget issues. And then under activities, approve the budget for next year. Again, evaluate the food service program, and recommend next steps.
May I make a suggestion that I thought of between meetings? I was thinking that we would add under budget, uh, having a discussion or some kind of assessment of the financial burden on North Reading of all the various mandates that we've had to handle, including, especially including the educator evaluation system. At, at least to have a discussion as a committee of how this affects our budgeting process, because we've had to put a lot of, of our strategic plans on hold and revise that, and I don't think we've actually told the community what, why we've had to prioritize other things.
And Cliff's working with the suburban coalition. I think they've come up with a list of all of the...
We had a list, but that, um, that was actually with the North Shore Coalition, which has really lost its steam.
The Association of Strategic Principals, so, maybe three years ago, put together a list of unfunded mandates.
I have that list. I just don't know the dollar amount that's associated, but we can work on that.
Yeah, I, I think that's important, and, and also, I mean, we're gonna hear about another one tonight.
Yes, you are.
So, I guess my, I would like to put on an activity as to the discussion part. I don't know how much assessment we wanna do, because that itself will create another burden on, on administration.
I think that's a good idea.
But I think it's worth sort of saying to the community, we have to do all this stuff, and in addition to that, we have to worry about student achievement, health, and safety, so that they're, they understand that we're not funding certain aspects of the strategic plan because of the massive amount of stuff we have to do.
We have to do all the stuff, and then we educate the kids.
Oh, well, yeah, that's secondary.
Secondary, right.
So, may I ask, discuss the financial impact of the unfunded mandates?
Yeah, I'd like, I think that's...
The financial impact?
I think that's a good activity under budget.
On the North Reading public schools?
Yep. And then we really didn't change anything. Under the finance planning team, and then we added the finance committee in terms of when we develop budget, to have that budget supported by the finance committee. Under educational program, the goals pretty much remain intact. Um, really no changes there at all, and, and that's where you would expect the most, I think, consistency from year to year. Um, you know, there is, the biggest thing going on right now is the, the common core standards coming into the school system, and, um, we've asked the superintendent to keep us apprised of how that's going and what changes are gonna be made there that parents and students will see. And then finally, under family and community relations, um, we talked about expanding, uh, we're gonna expand our media efforts, as shown by the new cable TV program, and we're gonna look into social media. Again, we talked about increasing community awareness of the budget process, not only through articles, but through the use of multimedia. Again, TV, social media, and newspapers. And then, um, this is something we talked about, and I think Karen came up with this phrase, phraseology for it, and I like it. Identify strategies for, and test feedback from the community. One of the things we talked about was when we go to, especially when we go out to the other schools, we visit the other schools, maybe have time for parents to ask questions, or maybe even in advance, get some information out to them, some questions to them for them to answer. We haven't really got the exact process down yet, but the idea is to get more feed, obviously, we're always open to feedback, but a lot of people don't come to our meeting, so try to find ways to get more feedback.
Send it to a public input session, which we have before every meeting, but nobody participates in, so be kinda trying to do that.
Right.
Type of discussion, you know?
Yeah, yeah. So, that was under the media. And then under community partnerships, assess community partnerships currently in place across the district. We talked about, you know, what kind of relationships we have with businesses, not only in North Reading. Obviously, we'd wanna focus there first, but some of the bigger businesses that are even outside of North Reading, in the surrounding area. And the superintendent is gonna work on that. And along those same lines, to look at how the other districts, surrounding districts, develop community partnerships, which helps with enrichment, supports courses, basically brings more funding and support from the community. And finally, we're, we're gonna ask the Met, the Metropolitan Regional Vocational Technical High School to come in once a year and give us a report, what's going on. So, those are the goals for this year, or the charter.
Do you wanna turn this into a charter?
I think at some point, we oughta figure out, formalize it.
The evaluations half committee could undertake that.
Yeah.
Put some of their responsibility.
So, let's look into that. Do we have to vote on these, or?
We did amend them, so...
Okay.
Yes, and you do annually vote on your goals.
So, at this point, I will, um, accept a motion to approve the 2013, 2014 goals as amended tonight by Karen with that one topic under the budget.
So, move.
Motion by Cliff? Yes, ma'am?
Second.
Second by Janine. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Okay, next, we have policy manual review and revision. We have one new policy, and we have a revised form. Um, the new policy, which relates to co-op teams and the athletic fees. We had the first reading at our, thirteen, meeting on thirteenth, was it? August twelve?
July twenty-ninth.
Oh, July twenty-ninth, okay. And, uh, we made some amendments, so I will read the policy as it stands now. It's policy J H A F.
Maybe somebody else wants to read.
Does anybody else wanna read?
Jerry Boggs read it out loud.
All right. Athletic fees and co-op teams. Athletic fees paid to North Reading High School by students who participate in cooperative teams hosted by other schools shall be handled in the following way. One, if the fee charged by the school hosting the cooperative team is less than what the student would have paid to North Reading High School, the team, the cooperative team fee will be subtracted from the North Reading High School fee, and the difference will be paid by the student to North Reading High School for the season. And then in parentheses, a cooperative team is an athletic team sponsored by another school district that allows North Reading students to participate, in parentheses. Two, if the fee charged by the school hosting the cooperative team is equal to or more than what the student would have paid to North Reading High School, the student will owe no money to North Reading High School for the season, but will be responsible to pay the entire fee to the host school. This policy only applies to athletic fees charged by the hosting school district for North Reading students to participate. And right now, I believe we have wrestling, girls hockey, and gymnastics that are co-op, correct, Jerry?
Yes.
Wrestling, girls hockey, gymnastic. I don't think there's anything else.
Yeah, I think those are the only ones, right.
Yeah. So, do we have any further questions or discussion of this?
The only thing, though, under number two hundred, it doesn't have to be part of the policy, but if in fact they're paying a fee that exceeds, um, whatever the, whatever they would have owed to North Reading for a user fee, then that's gonna be treated as a first, second, or third sport, just like it would otherwise be treated. In other words, if that's, say that was the first sport, then the next one would only be a two-hundred-dollar fee, obviously.
Hmm.
Right?
Yeah. What if we should put that in there, actually?
I don't know if it has to be policy, or it just has to make sure that that's interpreted that way by the athletic director.
That they've paid, if...
This is the second, the next one will be one-hundred. You know what I'm saying?
Right. That they've, by paying whatever fee they paid to the other school, they've paid the fee they would have paid to North Reading.
It's still a sport.
Right.
And if that's, if this season is the second, instead of the first season...
Right.
Right.
It falls in the same sequence...
Exactly.
Yeah.
Of decreasing...
I don't think we need to put a policy, but we need to just make sure that that's...
But it just needs to make sure the athletic director counts it the right way.
We should bring it up at the athletic subcommittee meeting on September, just to make sure everybody's clear.
In other words, if that happens, as, say, the first sport of the year for them, and then they go to play another one, that, you're not, they're not gonna pay a four-hundred-dollar fee, they're gonna pay a two-hundred-dollar fee.
Right, right.
I'll make sure this is on the agenda. We should go over the policy anyway with the athletic subcommittee.
Okay.
So, um, I would like to make a motion to approve the second reading of the athletic fees and co-op teams J H A F policy as amended.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Karen, second by Janine. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. And then next, Kathy, you wanna explain this again?
Yes, there are no changes on this form from the first reading to the second, but I'll just review what the changes were. Number four, if you look down the form, again, this is not the policy, but this is how the policy is enacted, hence the J B C A dash E. So, number four is the old seven, number five is completely new, number six is the old five, number seven is the old four, and number eight is the old six. So, it's been re...
That's so easy to understand.
Wait, I don't see, I don't see a number eight. Mine only goes to number seven.
This new one is the old one.
Wait a minute. Sorry, it's the wrong copy that was included in the packet.
Do you have the right one there?
I do.
We could still vote on it.
It's the same one that you approved the last time.
So, is this the old one that we have?
Yes. Here's the new one. Would you like to see it, Mr. Chair?
Hoover made the motion, as long as it's the one, you know?
Well, we, we...
There were no changes.
No, we didn't make any changes the last time.
So, it's just the second reading.
And to explain what this is, it's the North Reading Public Schools School Admission Residency Responsible Adult Affidavit, which must be filled out by those who are not the parentally guardian of child who is seeking enrollment, who lives with that person, or those, that family in North Reading that's seeking enrollment in North Reading Schools.
That's correct.
Okay. So, it'll be the one that we had last time, correct?
Correct.
So, then I will make a motion to approve, um, sorry, I ripped my hat right in the middle of the tone, um, the school admission residency responsible adult affidavit, J B C A as enacted.
Second reading.
Yeah, second reading.
Second reading.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Karen, second by Jerry. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous.
Sorry about that.
All right. Okay, next, a new business, capital planning committee appointments. And this, this is, if you accept this appointment, or if someone volunteers for this, you have to get sworn in, um, at the town clerk's office to participate on this committee.
Why, I don't know, but...
You also need to be available during the work hours.
Yes, during the day, right.
In person.
Yeah. So, um, Michael, you will be sitting on this committee, correct?
Correct.
Have you been sworn in yet?
I have not.
Okay. You just have to go over to see Barbara Stats over at town hall.
Okay.
Anybody else on the committee interested?
I would love to, but I don't know that I would, I, I think I would be better, like, shadowing someone to better understand and learn.
No.
No?
You'd be better...
They'll have Mike, so you'll be...
Yeah, Mike won. Mike will be there, and the best way for you to learn about the capital planning stuff is to just jump right in.
I think it'd be really good, huh?
Well, because what's gonna happen is, we're gonna review everything, any capital requests, we're gonna review fully with our committee before they get sent to the capital planning committee. So, you and Michael will be there as our advocates for our projects. And also, I think everybody, the way they did it last year, everybody, they vote, everybody in the committee votes on projects, um, and then they assess importance, they, they rank them in order based on the voting.
Of course, our, our two votes go to school projects.
Right, right. But they don't necessarily then approve them based on the order they're ranked. I think last, the, the one project that we didn't get last year, that I'm hoping is back on this year, is buying more iPads, and, especially with the new school coming on. And we'll have the wireless infrastructure.
They meet during the day, you know?
Yeah.
Well, Karen's the only one with a real job on the committee, so any of us can do it.
I can't do it. I'm out.
But I think it would really be good for you to do, to just jump right in, if you can do it. They usually meet, I think, at four-thirty or four o'clock.
I'm not sure what they're going to do this year. Last year was the first year, so they'll, they'll assess, but I think it was four-thirty.
Mondays are the only one that would be difficult, but yeah.
Okay.
We gotta vote on this?
Yes.
I make a motion to appoint Janine Ambriano as our representative on the capital planning with straight into the...
Second.
And Michael, do I have to say Michael, too?
Yes.
So, it'd be Janine and Michael.
No, second, actually.
Okay. Motion by Jerry, second by Cliff, to appoint Janine and Michael to the Town Capital Planning Committee. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Janine.
It's quite an honor.
Don't screw up. Now that you're on the committee, now that she's on the committee, we can say that, right?
We're all counting on you.
We probably won't be seeing another school capital project for ten years.
Can't afford it, anyway. We got the school, we got the school to finish. Okay, next we have the, I always get excited when we just started the fiscal year, the 2013, the school year hasn't started yet, and we're talking about the FY two-fif- 2015 budget development schedule. So, Kathy, Michael?
Um, so, this is the 2015 budget development schedule that we have put together. It does follow pretty closely the schedule that was prepared for the, during fiscal year 2014. Uh, so, we would open up the process in the first meeting in October with a discussion on the school committee's goals, um, and approval of the, the goals to guide the process. Uh, that would allow us, on the end of October, um, to internally, uh, send the, the budget request sheets to the principals and the budget leaders, for them to review the, the budget workshop documents, and put together their requests and, and needs, and allow us to administer that process at the administrative council meetings in October and November. Uh, those requests would come in shortly before the Thanksgiving break on November twenty-first to the business office, which would allow, uh, myself and Superintendent Willis to start reviewing the requests and starting to prepare the, uh, the budget. Um, at the December ninth school committee meeting, we would have a discussion on the capital recruitment project, so that's, um, the discussion of the school, the school request that would, again, get forwarded on to the townwide capital committee that myself and Janine just got appointed to. So, that would, that would be the, the detailed discussion of our requests would occur on December ninth. We would move on to the, in March, and at that point, the preliminary budget would be distributed to the school committee, so we would have a, a preliminary budget prepared at that point, where we could review and, and have a discussion. Typically, around this time of year, uh, you know, in March, April, end of March, beginning of April timeframe, we would present that recommended budget to the finance committee. That date is to be determined, but it would usually occur in the, the March, April timeframe, so we would, we'll await for that date. Um, in the March, April timeframe as well, we would, against, you know, see community input, and that's when we would certainly take advantage of any social media, reach out to, uh, using the transcript and the articles, and talk about where we're at with the budget process, and, and take advantage. That would certainly be happening in March and April. And I do apologize, from April seventh date on down, those should say 2014, not, not thirteen. But around April seventh, that's the first meeting. In April, we would have our official budget hearing, which we're legally, you know, need to do so, so we would advertise that hearing and, and, and hold that hearing on April seventh. Um, so we would solicit feedback from, from the public. On April fifteenth, we would formally present the recommended budget to the school committee. Um, on April twenty-eighth, you know, we can continue any discussion on the budget at, at that time, and we would, you know, look for the school committee to make their formal vote on that recommended budget. That would allow us to have a voted budget and plenty of time to forward to the town to prepare the town meeting warrant article, uh, before, before the, the June second town meeting. Um, the other date that we're still waiting for, which would usually occur in, in May timeframe, would be the selectmen vote on the town meeting warrant, so, so we would, we would wait on that date. Uh, town meeting has been scheduled for June second, 2014, so, um, we would present our recommended voted budget at town meeting for approval at that time. So, if there's any suggestions or questions?
Questions or comments from Michael?
The only questions I have is that, do we need to work in anything related to articles that we just approved? I'm, I'm just reading it. I'm trying to figure out whether or not we need to account for it. I don't think so. I don't think so.
I think that it'll be part of the discussion, yeah, especially the last thing you talked about, about the mandates that we have to pay for, that'll be part of our discussion. And I think that's important. As with last year, though, we started to explain to the public, when we get, if we get $25 million from the town, that's not our budget. Our budget's something like almost $30 million when you take into account all of the-
The subsidies.
The subsidies that we get. The two questions or comments that I have, one is, at the last finance planning meeting, Mr. Messari started talking about speeding up the process and maybe having the budget done sooner. I don't know, we can talk at the next finance planning meeting. I think the schedule's fine, I think it gives us-
What's the rationale behind that?
I don't know.
Consider, we don't know what our revenue is out. It's April 28th, we're holding on, and why would we speed it up?
He made that point, he made that point, but I think, I think there were some issues last year, maybe more on the town side, where there was some last minute, so.
I think that's it, because after the meeting, I sat with the town administrator, and I showed him the budget proposed, the schedule that we were proposing to you tonight, and he said, Kathy, that looks fine. I don't see any need to change.
Okay.
Because if Bob's saying it, I want to hear what he has to say.
I think it's maybe more from the town side, maybe more from the town side. The other issue is, I think we've done a great job working with Carl Nelson in the past, putting budgets together, and I think we've had really, you know, solid budgets and done as much as we can with the funds that we have. But one of the things that comes with change and turnover in administration is new thinking, new ideas about budgeting. So, I'm not asking you to tell us right now, you know, how you're going to change the world, but, you know, don't, don't feel constrained to keep doing things the way we've always done it. I'm hoping to, you know, I'm not saying do zero-based budgeting, because I think that's pretty difficult to do, because you have some built-in costs that are automatically there, so there is no zero-based budgeting.
Right.
But, you know, if there are things you've done at other school districts that you think can benefit us to bring-
I don't think we're necessarily locked into level services budgeting every year.
Right.
That's where we've gone the last three years, but I think if there's something we can do beyond that, or if you come up with some-
Yeah, I think that, I mean, I know there was discussion at the financial planning meeting about taking a, you know, building expense budget from the bottom line out, not really zero-based, but the next approach bottom line, and I think that's, that certainly makes sense in certain, certain approaches to take in certain expense budgets. So, I think that's kind of the approach I've done in the past, and, you know, I can discuss that with the administrative council and Superintendent Willis.
Well, that's interesting, because I think, as you know, I think over the last six years, we've reduced the building expense budgets at every school.
Yes.
Now, on the face of it, that sounds like a really bad thing, but maybe there's a lot of things that, because of technology, whatever, that we don't have to spend money on, so I think a zero, zero-based budgeting in that area might make sense, because the school building budgets aren't that, that large, and there's, like, finite things that they buy, pretty much. So, but I just wanted to make sure that, you know, you, you feel comfortable kind of spreading out and giving us some input as to how we might change and do some things differently. I mean, we're going to have the same amount of money regardless of what we do, but, you know, in our approach, as you probably know, is we've, the last several years, we've come in with level services as our baseline, and we've always ended up level services minus, pretty much.
Several levels.
Right. And this year, the interesting thing is going to be with the declining enrollment, what kind of impact does that have, and will we be able to, if we, if we lose positions at one grade or one school, can we then turn that into a benefit at another school or district-wide?
Yeah. I mean, I think we can. I don't think the decline in enrollment's going to be enough to have a major impact on it, but I think-
Right, well, especially with kindergarten, what we're seeing there, so, you're right. And we're probably going to be challenged at the high school and middle school in terms of staffing over the next several years, three or four years.
So, basically, what we're saying is that be, be idea oriented and innovate and do whatever you'd like, and, well, you know, if you have a question or an idea that you want to ask us about before you do it, feel free.
Yeah.
We'd be happy to share.
That's exactly what I'm saying.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
All right. Any other questions on the budget?
I just have a comment on it. You know, we've managed to hold the line on expenses for four, five years with zero increase, and that actually is a reduction every year because of inflation.
Right.
And you can only reduce just so many times at 5% or 4%, 3% even, before it starts to add up.
Well, I think one of the things we don't see is when we don't increase, or when we reduce the school budget, what happens is, I think some of that burden falls on the parents' backs and on the community's backs, and we don't see that. So, if the school can't buy X for the classroom, the next thing they do is they either go to the parent-teacher organization, or they go to the parents and say, or both, and say, we need funds for this. And that's what's happened a lot, that's kind of the hidden, the hidden expense that we don't talk about a lot.
I don't think it's a hidden expense if you're a parent.
Right, so if you're a parent, it's not hidden.
You notice it right off.
Right.
And the, the number of things you have to have, the calculator that costs $120, that you have to have that specific model of to get through the math course. There's, there's things like that along the way that are just, they're a reduction in the public part of public school.
Well, and we have, and we have teachers who spend money out of their own pocket to equip their classrooms. Many teachers do that, so. Okay, do we have to approve the calendar, or is, I don't think we need to vote on this , do we?
I don't think so, no.
No, okay.
I don't think we have any passes, just establishing.
All right. Okay. Superintendent Evaluation Goals Review.
Oh, I'm sorry. I did put discussion and vote in the, in superintendent's notes, so I think it's a good idea to vote the calendar.
Okay.
It can always be adjusted.
So, I'll accept a motion to approve the budget calendar as amended with the year 2014 instead of 2013, for the last-
Will we issue that?
So moved, along with changing it under April 28th, the school committee vote recommended budget.
Oh, vote instead of voting, okay.
As amended, second.
Okay. Motion by Cliff, second by Karen. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? unanimous. Okay. Superintendent Goals?
Yes. As you know, we are piloting the educator evaluation system for the superintendent for about approximately 16 months. So, on March 11th, I presented to you a draft of my educator plan, and the educator plan included five goals. There's, and they're required by the state of Massachusetts. So, there's a student learning goal, a professional practice goal, and three district goals. So, I'm going to hand to you tonight what's called the Mid-Cycle Goals Progress Report. When the school committee put together a timeline for implementing this educator evaluation system for the superintendent, the school committee identified two instead of one mid-cycle goals progress review sessions. So, this is the first of two. The second one will occur either in the middle of December or early in January, and I'm voting for the January date.
And again, this is tied to the new state requirements for educator evaluations, correct?
This is required.
Yes.
This is required. It's all required.
Right.
So, there was not a mid-cycle goals progress report form necessarily for the superintendent, so what I did was, I went to look at what the administrators and the teachers had, and I just adapted it for me. So, I'm going to orient you to the form and then walk you through it.
So, you made this form?
Well, I just adjusted it from-
Okay, so this wasn't provided as part of the lovely toolkit of how to do this, right?
Not for the superintendent, but it was for the others, so I just adapted.
Well done, Kathy.
How did you have time to do that with your new TV career?
Weekends. Isn't that what weekends are for?
Correct, okay.
Okay, thank you. So, on the first page, you see an overall analysis, and I'll walk you through that in a minute. The second page, we're required to identify what the professional practice goal is, so you'll see that in description, that's taken right off of the educator evaluation plan. And then I have to provide comments to you, and that's the same for the student learning goal, and then the three district improvement goals. And then what I need to do is indicate for you in the far right-hand column whether or not I feel that progress is on target, off target, or not started yet. So, if we go back to the front page, you'll just see, I'm not going to read this to you, but I'm going to give you just a couple of highlights. I talked about the approval process of the plan, and since that time, I've been engaged in professional development around the implementation of the educator evaluation system district-wide. This has just been constant. It's been going on over the course of last year, it's been taking place this summer. I'm participating in another professional development workshop tomorrow with teams of educators from each of the schools, as well as a central office administrative team, and we're continuing our professional development with Teachers 21 around the implementation of, over this year. The contract language governing the implementation of the teacher evaluation system was ratified last June. The school committee played a key role in that. And then over the summer, well, last spring and this summer, I worked with the administrators in a similar process, because they have contract language guarding, governing the implementation of this new educator evaluation system for them. So, that was signed off on in August, so we just signed off on an agreement around that. So, this, a lot has been and will continue to take place regarding the implementation of this new system, and I'll keep you posted. I've started to try to track the hours, as was requested by the committee, that it takes to implement this, and it's just phenomenal. I just can't even begin to describe to you how much time this new system is taking.
Yes, the thing that I don't understand, and I've expressed this a zillion times, is we had a really solid evaluation process in place here, not only for administrators and you, but also for the teachers. And we have a really solid performing district, and yet we have to change everything, which takes a lot of time, and we're reinventing the wheel to come up with the same answers, basically. We're reinventing the process, taking a lot of time, and to come up with the same answers, but we have to do it.
I recognize that this system is focused on growth, not just for our students, but for educators across the district, and we will continue to engage in that process. But the bureaucracy that is attached to the implementation is overwhelming.
See, I would argue that this district has always been focused on growth for-
I agree with you.
-our teachers, our administrators, and our superintendent, and they should focus on districts that don't do that. That's, I guess that's, this one-size-fits-all just doesn't make sense, but go ahead.
So, again, another part, a very important part of moving any organization forward is focusing on strategic continuous improvement. So, the two-day annual retreat that's held with our leadership team that is made up of all of our principals, assistants, our assistant PPS director, central office faculty, we took a look at NRPS 2016 and really took apart each of the three major strategy areas, first two years of implementation. What did we implement, what didn't we implement, and why? Is it still worth implementing? What do we want to accomplish in this third year of that five-year plan? And then, how do those changes have an impact on years four and five? So, we spent two days really focusing on this continuous improvement plan, and I will be presenting that to you at one of the committee meetings in September. Not an awful lot has changed, I can tell you we probably added more to do in years three, four, and five, in response to what's taken place in the first two years, in response to some of the mandates that we need to, to implement, and in response to where we want to be in 2016. So, it's all good, as they say. And in addition, it's very important to have, I think, a formal evaluation process of the work that's taking place, but on a, on a broad level. So, what we took a look at were continuous improvement continuums that have been published by Dr. Victoria Bernhardt. She wrote a book that's called How to Improve Student Achievement, and I've used that book extensively in other districts around strategic planning. And so, there are seven continuous improvement continuums. We took a look at five, and I've named those five for you, and we took a look at where the district is right now on this rubric, which is the continuum, and we assessed where we are now, and what are those steps that we need to take that are connected to NRPS 2016 that will move us on this continuum of being proficient in these five areas. So, we're using this as a pre and a post-assessment of the work that's being done. We completed it in July, we'll take a look at it again in June, and we'll continue to do that as part of the retreat, as well as assessing our progress annually. So, I'll have an opportunity to share that work with you as well in September. So, and then, as far as implementing a very important part of the educator evaluation system, in terms of assessment, along with MCAS, I've worked very closely with the Director of Academic Services in the pilot and implementation of the DDMs, the District Determined Measures, aligned to the frameworks and the Common Core standards. You'll notice, or you may remember, that my student learning goals are really focused on improving achievement in the area of mathematics. And so, I am working closely with Patrick Daly around the implementation of all of our DDMs, but a lot of my work with the principals will focus on mathematics in particular.
And the DDMs replace the old standards that were part of No Child Left Behind, correct?
Actually, the DDMs are district determined measures, so they're local assessments that we have to use in addition to MCAS to determine if we're making growth, progress in improving student achievement.
But there had been federal standards that are no longer, the states got, state, most states got waivers to use their own standards, correct?
Their own tests. These are assessments.
Wrong tests, right.
Yes, yes. And so, what the Department of Ed is doing is providing an awful lot of guidance around DDMs that we could adopt, but they'll also approve locally-developed DDMs. In North Reading, there had been DDMs that had been identified at the elementary level, and so those have been revisited. There have always been end-of-course and mid-year exams at the high school, and so we're using, we're using those and determining how we can measure growth, and maybe revising them to provide more alignment to the Common Core standards. And then, we're taking a look at those areas that didn't necessarily have a district determined measure attached to it, art, music, and PE. All subject areas need to have district determined measures attached to them. So, there's some required and mandated work by the Department of Ed as to what we must develop this year. We have to develop DDMs for K3 literacy, K3 math, 5-8 math, high school writing to text, and test a traditionally non-tested grade in subject areas such as fine arts, music, PE. So, those are have-tos. We can go beyond that this year, but that's what the department will be collecting data on at the end of this year.
Okay.
So, as far as the actual progress toward meeting the goals, you'll see pages two and three outline each of the goals and some of the steps that have been taken to achieve those goals by June of 2014. If you take a look at the first professional practice goal, we're setting up schedules for the amount of time that I must spend in the schools with the principals as they provide observations of the teachers. So, we'll be doing an awful lot of walking around and walking and evaluating teaching in the classrooms together, and that's how we're going to try to maximize the time that we all have to spend in the classrooms. And so, that work is going on. We engaged. I thought this was very interesting. When I was at the Massachusetts Association for School Superintendents Executive Institute in July, there were mini-workshops that we could sign up for, and I attended several mini-workshops regarding the implementation of the educator evaluation system, since we're not a race to the top district, and I received some really good strategies from two veteran superintendents that had implemented last year. And one of, one piece of advice that both of them gave was to take a look at the teacher and administrator rubric that has been attached to the educator evaluation system, and find your priority indicators and elements under each of those rubrics on which to focus in year one that will provide the most leverage that you think will improve student achievement. Because for the administrators, we have four standards, 20 indicators, and 42 elements if we try to do it all.
So, you're going to focus on all of those, right?
No, we're not. What we did was, we went through a wonderful exercise just this month, and under, we have to focus on each of the standards and take a look at at least one indicator under each standard to report on at the end of this school year. This is some of the data that will be collected by the Department of Ed. But we reduced the 20 indicators to eight and the 42 elements to 12, and we're going to focus on that, on those areas this year as we implement in year one. And we're going through a similar- And we're going through a similar process with the teachers. The teachers have four standards, 16 indicators, and 33 elements. We are going to really focus on standards one and two, curriculum planning and assessment, and teaching all students. Because teachers must earn a proficient in, on each one of those standards in order to be deemed proficient as an educator on this system. So we're telling them, it's not that we're not going to focus on standard three and four. We'll find one indicator on each of those, just as we did as administrators.
So you're not going to focus on those things. You're going to focus on the one or two things that are important.
That's correct.
And then look at the others.
That's correct. We're going to make this manageable in our eyes for our educators in this district. So that's something that we worked on this August, and the principals will be working with their teachers at a faculty meeting in September in the same way. Because we need to minimize the level of anxiety that's out there around the implementation of this system and still make it a growth opportunity for our educators.
Kathy, this story needs to be told to other districts. What you just said, magic. We, we need to do that everywhere, just. And we need to get North Reading's experience out there. Because I think everything that you're learning now of going through this process is incredibly valuable, not, I mean, you're taking something we have to do and turning it into a positive, that we can use as the district.
And I'm learning from my colleagues who have been through it for one year already.
Yeah.
And gave wonderful words of wisdom to us this past summer.
That's fabulous.
Yes.
We still, we just need to keep talking about it.
Exactly. So you can see student learning, the results for 2013 MCAS are embargoed right now, but we are looking at those results and will be using the 2013 MCAS results as compared to the 2014 to make sure that we're making growth. The first district improvement goal, took a look, it's, it's how do we improve our ratings of classroom instruction so that we all have a greater understanding of what teaching and learning looks like? So you can see some of the activities in which we've already engaged with our educators, as well as our administrators. What does it look like and what does it sound like if we're proficient on the indicators and elements on standards one and standards two? That's what teachers need to be proficient. So we all need to know what that looks like when we're in the classroom. And it's very important for our teachers to have a common understanding of what that looks like. So we engaged in that exercise last spring. We've collected all that data. We've given some of that back to the teachers. They will have that as a guide to assist them with the implementation in their classrooms as well. And then the, the fourth goal, which is the third district goal, talks about making sure that we do everything we need to do in year one of a two-year implementation process. So it outlines some of the actions that we've taken. And the fifth goal is talking about NRPS 2016. And I've explained to you a little bit about what we've done. So I welcome any input. You'll notice at the top of page one, I need to sign this after it's been presented by the school committee to incorporate any recommendations that you may have regarding my mid-cycle goals, perhaps, you want.
Yes.
I can't imagine burdening the system that's already burdened with a whole other layer of effort. But there's got to be some way that we accumulate how much effort is being expended on this humongous project. These unfunded mandates have just gotten way beyond real. And I don't, again, I don't, I don't imagine putting a tracking system on it that adds added burden. But there's got to be some way that we can estimate or whatever, somehow accumulate how much effort is being expended on doing this.
We are, we are quantifying.
And the other mandates that keep on coming and coming and coming, they're, it's ridiculous. Our mission is to teach kids. It isn't to satisfy bureaucrats. And satisfying bureaucrats is what we seem to be doing today. You got to stop doing that and start doing the real mission. I, I know we're doing the real mission, but.
I think the challenge is.
There's a limit to what you can get out of anybody. And, and the, and this is obvious, the gross overkill of, of something that ought to be relatively simple.
It was simple before the state got a hold of it.
Yeah.
We had a pretty simple process in place.
Yeah. The bureaucracy is just, and somebody is supposedly at the state being paid to look at all this stuff.
Right.
That, that adds insult to injury.
Make sure we do it right.
So I just.
Yes.
So back to the original exercise, which is, you're doing awesome. So just, this is actually wonderful. I really, I feel honored that we can contribute to this process, and I hope that what we add is helpful to you. One of my questions is, is there something that we can do to support you in this process and that we're not doing as a committee? Feel like you have everything you need to be successful. And if there aren't enough things, what are those things? Loaded question.
It is. I can tell you that as an administrative and leadership team, we are anticipating some concern regarding the implementation because we'll be focusing most of our time in the classrooms. And so the emails might not get answered immediately. It might take a little more time. And we recognize that we, we have a responsibility to be responsive to our community and our clientele, but we also have a responsibility to do the best that we can in implementing this. There's only so much time in a day. So the challenge for us will be, how do we find the balance? And in the first year, you know that the balance is not there because you're trying to do something new, and there's a learning curve associated with that. So again, we're, we're asking for patience and understanding as we go through this in the first year, and even in the second year, as we roll the second half of the faculty into this process. Because this is only half of the faculty this year. But I know that I've asked the administrators to quantify the amount of time it will take them to carry this out. And we need to be thinking about, how do we use the resources that we currently have in maybe a different way that allows us to be more efficient or effective? Conversely, if the resources that we currently have are not adequate, what do we need in order to do this well? I don't have the answer to that yet, but those are the thoughts that we have around, you know, do we have what we need or do we need something else?
So I, I think these are good checkpoints to figure out the answer to that question because it, it may just be that this is too much, or we need to rethink the ambition, ambition level of what we're trying to achieve. I mean, I'm looking at your goals and I'm like, wow, this is awesome and hugely important and so time-consuming. And you need a staff to actually run this. It's like a project. So, you know, I think if we can keep that conversation going, not just at the assessment checkpoints, but if we can continue to talk about the overall burden that you're under, not just as a superintendent, but the administrative team. And our, and our staff and our teachers. I think that's a really important conversation because one of our goals is to manage that externally and to continue to have conversations with people in the community and let them know it may not be getting turnaround, you know? And there's a reason for it, you know? And we need to keep that conversation going so people understand it. So that's one role I can receive as help and support.
And communicating the time and effort that's going to require to get this completed. I think you're looking at the five goals and the comments. It seems to me that you're, you know, focused on all five and a good way down the road in terms of doing what you need to do to meet those goals. So I don't have any, I don't have any comments other than that. Seems you're doing a great job getting done what needs to get done.
This is her clone.
And also building a school. And you're also building a school.
Two.
Two schools.
So that, I, and I appreciate any support and any feedback that you can provide. It is a work in progress. And again, the goal is to minimize the level of concern on the part of our educators so that they can focus on doing the good work, but that we are growing as a, as a district. Focus is on growth.
Any further questions, comments? Okay, next. I don't think we have any minutes, correct? Or do we?
Next time.
Next time. And we don't have a budget update, right?
No.
And no staffing?
Next time. We are still staffing.
Biz and donations? Next time? No, we don't have any biz and donations?
Donations.
Subcommittee updates? None, right?
We did have an athletic subcommittee, but I think.
Right.
I think that was. At the meeting on the seventh, I don't know if we need to go through it again.
No. And we need to establish schedules for the subcommittees in the near future.
And Jerry, you have anything from legislative bulletin?
Yeah, a couple of interesting things, actually, in there. Chapter 71, section 37-0, which is the bullying law, was amended. And interestingly enough, it was amended to include not only students from, being prohibited from bullying, but also all staff members, including, you know, paraprofessionals. Let me see. School staff, including educators, administrators, school nurse, cafeteria workers, custodians, bus drivers, athletic coaches, advisors, new extracurricular activities, paraprofessionals. So they're all included now in the statute, in addition to students bullying students. It would be staff and faculty also prohibited from bullying students. And the other sec, the second thing was, I think a few weeks ago, Kathy, you made a presentation regarding the new background investigations that were being imposed by the state, or the federal government, actually, I think it was. And the requirement that all new employees and existing employees have their fingerprints taken and processed in a federal database for background checks, not, that included not only Massachusetts, but the entire country. And I think at that time, they were requiring that all new employees have this done for the start of the, for the 13, 14 school year. Of course, they're not prepared, they haven't assigned a vendor yet to do the fingerprints, and they're working on some technical changes in the law. So as of right now, I think what they're suggesting is that you continue to go through the query process until this is all in place.
That's correct. And we have, I, I think I shared with you, we created a memo alerting our new hires to the fact that as a condition of employment, once this comes online, they are expected to go through this process. And they have signed off on that. And that was suggested.
Yeah, that was a requirement that they acknowledged that they're going to have to go through.
Yes.
This process when the time comes.
Couple of things to add to that. I noticed in the Globe, I think it was last week, there was a story focused on Reading and the issues with the new Common Core math curriculum and taking algebra out of the eighth grade and parents, you know, then the kid can't go through the natural progression and actually take calculus without doubling up from one of the years of math. I wanted to ask you a question because it seemed in that story that, it was almost saying that that would be only a temporary thing for two or three years until the lower grades, and then they might reintroduce algebra to the eighth grade or what?
Well, remember, oh, I think, I think Patrick came and presented on this, that there is another sequence, an accelerated sequence, but we did not put that sequence into place starting this fall because there was much more work that needed to be done. So it's our seventh, it's our, our seventh and eighth graders that are going to need to double up. But once we put this accelerated course in, it is a natural pathway to being able to.
Take calculus, CD year?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. But it's something that has not been developed yet, and we didn't want to hurry up and do something that could possibly change. So we wanted to put a more conservative approach in place.
The other thing I noticed, that it was during the Wall Street Journal last week, there's still a great deal of discussion around the Common Core. I thought I read somewhere that waivers are being offered if districts or states want to opt out for another, take another year to implement the Common Core. I think it's, that's something that bears watching, obviously.
Yes.
Because on top of all this new evaluation stuff, we have the Common Core that we're implementing, implementing, which on its own is a massive effort. So.
Yes.
Okay. Administrative report.
Yes, I pass that out to you. Thank you for the copy. I just want to bring your attention to a couple of things. We annually have a new faculty orientation. It's a two-day orientation for our professional faculty. It's taking place August 28th and 29th. I wanted you to see the scheduled events that are pulled together by Patrick Daly, our Director of Academic Services. He oversees the induction program with our three mentor coordinators. And so on August 28th, they come to the high school, and Patrick and I introduce all of the administrators to them, and then we take them through an orientation. They have photographs taken. Bob Terroz comes and, and takes the annual picture of the new hires, the new faculty, and puts that in the transcript. And then they go on their bus tour of North Reading on the, on a yellow school bus, and Ann Lundell narrates that tour to orient them to the town.
A lot of people say it's better than the duck tours.
Yeah, that's right, yeah. Even though they don't go in the water, I hear that.
Well, they do, they go into Miles Pond.
Oh, do they? Yeah. The bus goes right on the.
A lot of times the bus doesn't make it across.
Well, yeah. So they have to wear life jackets, right?
I took that bus tour my first year in town, and I thought it was great.
I've never taken it. I think I'm going to take it.
Well, Michael will be taking it. And, and I think it's a wonderful way to take a look at, you know, the residences in town where our students are living and, and the businesses. Ann puts in plugs for all of the businesses that are passed. She has the same tour that she takes, and we really thank the, the bus company for providing a bus for this activity. But on, we have lunch for the new hires on the first day, and the second day. But on the first day, we invite administrators and members of the school committee to come if you are able to participate in the lunch and get to be introduced to the new hires.
It's Wednesday, right?
It's Wednesday. Yeah, 12:30.
What do you have for lunch?
It's all, it's all, that you put, you sampled.
So it's healthy.
Presented by, and it's all healthy.
Well, that was pretty good, that stuff they had, though.
Yeah.
I might go.
So if you'd like to come to a free lunch.
It's free. You can get a free lunch these days, Karen.
So that will be on Wednesday at 12:30. And then I just wanted you to take a look at all of the activities that they're engaging in on the 29th. They have their technology boot camp, so they're working with Joanne Coughlin, Helen Kelly, our new digital learning specialist, will also be there to assist them in becoming oriented to.
She's the teacher from the hood, right? She was great when she presented on that.
Yes, she's our new digital learning specialist. So that's what's taking place. Just, this is just an FYI, but I also wanted to extend an invitation for you to come to lunch if you're, if you are able. The second item in this report I want to bring your attention to was the DESC Educator Evaluation E-Newsletter. You'll see the August 2013 newsletter. If you look at the bottom of the first page, you'll see that Patrick Daly and North Reading have been highlighted. This goes out to the entire state and the work that Patrick has been doing on DDMs with the Northeast Consortium for Staff Development, the Chompsley Curriculum Leaders Group.
I love the last, the last, the last six words.
Despite being a non-RTTT district.
Because we're proud of that.
How could you possibly achieve anything if you're not in that?
We are proud of that, by the way. But go ahead.
I thank you for that extra year of letting us get ready. And at the top of the page on the back, you know, it's talking about getting the right message out around the work that's being done.
Good job, Patrick.
So I just wanted you to know that he's being recognized by the State Department of Education. He's done an awful lot of work with Ron Noble, who's really in charge of, of the DDM piece.
Great.
The third piece that I'm bringing your attention to is a, a letter I actually received on Friday from the Commissioner of Education. I did forward an electronic copy to you, but I think it's worth noting that the PARC, the Partnership for Assessment of Readiness for College and Careers, is a test that is being developed that will replace, if it still goes forward, the MCAS test in the state of Massachusetts. It is in development, and it is being developed by the Pearson Corporation. They're a testing contractor. And so what's going to be taking place in the state of Massachusetts is that certain school districts and schools within those districts were randomly selected to participate in the PARC field test. So North Reading on Friday was notified that we have been selected at random to participate in this field test in the spring of 2014. So by September 4th, I will receive an email from Pearson to indicate which schools have been selected to participate from our district, and then to provide some additional details about the test. If you go on to read this five-page, I'm sorry, three pages, I exaggerate, this three-page letter from the commissioner, it provides details regarding the expectations that schools selected will participate in this field test. So I'm very anxious to find out what schools have been selected from North Reading to participate because I feel we have some extenuating circumstances taking place over the course of this year, particularly at the middle school and the high school, where I will respond to the Department of Ed that I don't think we're going to be able to participate if those schools are selected.
High five.
So we'll see how this plays out. I'll keep you posted, but.
I'm just, I'm outraged by this. I'm just, I'm outraged by this because we're like the guinea pigs for Pearson so Pearson can get their tests right, and yet we don't get anything for it. We're going to have to spend money on this. It's going to cost us money and person, people power to get this done. And if you have a 10th grade that, 10th grade that has to take it, they've got to take the MCAS test and these tests.
That's correct. But I'm going to. We have a NEASC site visit in March. We have, we're moving into a new school this spring. The middle school's moving to the high school. I think we have enough extenuating circumstance to say that we need to be excused from participating if the middle school or the high school or both have been identified. Now, granted, it's not the entire school.
No, it's.
They've been very specific about saying it will be a sample of the grade levels in either ELA or MAP. It's either the performance-based test or the end-of-the-year test. And there's some option for excusing the students that participate from the MCAS test without penalty. Needless to say, there's lots of details associated with all of that that will require some significant conversation between the administrators, depending upon who's selected. So, again, I'm just speculating here, but I'm just setting the stage for what may come on September 4th.
It would really be nice if they sent us a lifesaver instead of an anchor. You know, it really would.
But Cliff, at least again, there's plenty of time. It's only August 23rd. I mean, we got at least a week to get ready.
Sure.
We'll send them a bill.
So, the, so the question I have is, we don't have to change anything in terms of what we're teaching. The goal is to find out how, what we are teaching the students today, how they then translate that into performance on this PARK test.
That's correct. It, if you look at the second page, at the top of the page, it, it explains what this field test is. We know it's an important milestone in the development of any assessment. And by the way, when another, other testing companies are trying to get norming samples, they'll contact the district. They'll ask you if you'll be willing to participate. And then they provide some kind of remuneration for your time and participation. That's not taking place this time. The administration of the PARK this year will help state policymakers across the 23-state consortium and the testing contractor to understand how test items perform and how well those items measure student performance based on the Common Core state standards.
Now, I, I thought that if a state wanted to, it could, so is PARK, is this a national test or is this just for Massachusetts?
This is a test that's being developed by a 23-state consortium of schools and our commissioner is the chair of this commission.
So, what are the tests that Kentucky students have taken and New York students have taken, and they've, the performance has been extremely poor on those tests?
That could be their own state test. There is another.
But it was a new test that, and it's reflecting the new.
Okay, I'm not quite sure what that test is. This PARK is one test that's under development. There is another test that's under development. The name of that test escapes me right now. So, there's another test that's competing with PARK.
I think that one's Drive.
Are they paying more?
Park and Drive?
Two-thirds of the public schools are being selected to do this.
I know.
That's correct.
There's so many other ways they could do this, and they chose to do it in this manner during this very important implementation year in the educator evaluation system.
Exactly. And the Common Core.
Every other thing, Common Core bullying intervention plans are in their second, second year of implementation. We've got the background inquiry check we have to remember to do. There's the, just.
We have the retail. We have, we're, we're, next year, we're Cohort Three, but that's coming online. Where we have to make sure that all of our teachers that are engaging, we have 14 teachers that need to be trained in sheltered English immersion, who will be working with any of our English language learners in the next school year. So, that's another initiative that's coming online. We're Cohort Three. There are Cohort, Cohort Two is implementing this year. So, that's another.
And if you read this letter, they basically aren't giving you an option to say no. They're going to be very unhappy if we say.
So what?
No.
I mean, there, there's definitely outrage in the school committee community.
Yeah.
We've heard some of it publicly in the listserv. I also know that, that MAS is very upset about all of these requirements and asking for superintendents to push back. So, I don't know. I mean, how much more can we do?
I will participate in the September 9th information session from 10:30 to 12:00. Another chunk of time devoted to finding out how to participate in this.
But the rest of the school committee sent an angry memo to the DESE about the number of things they're asking us to do. Not that that would do anything, but it might make me feel better.
I think rather than.
It's just to make you feel better than no.
Okay. Jerry, I always appreciate your concern about my well-being.
I think, I think that instead of that, what we should be looking at is supporting the superintendent if the superintendent says no.
Yep.
Yes, absolutely. And I, I think, especially if it's a middle school and high school.
Yeah. If it's a middle school or high school, I think that that, that should be a no.
Right.
Clearly, it ought to be a no. We've got too much else going on here to pay attention to yet another program, another unfunded mandate.
We'll definitely support you on that.
Okay, I'll keep you posted.
I'd like an investigation into who Pearson paid.
Right.
Contribution to the last election cycle.
They're publicly available with the.
Yes.
Finally, the floors are waxed.
They're beautiful.
The materials have been received, opened, distributed, and almost all of the hiring is complete. We've had a, we have, we've had a couple of resignations. I received one today, not from a teacher, from a paraprofessional who was appointed to a full-time teaching position. So, we're very happy for this paraprofessional. But we're almost complete in terms of the hiring. But we will be ready for opening day for our students on Wednesday, September 4th, and for our teachers and educators on September 3rd.
If they can find a place to park.
Right.
We're asking people to carpool because we will still be having our opening day meeting on September 3rd at the high school. So, the principals have already contacted the faculties in their schools and asked them to carpool to the site on that day.
Super.
Okay. Anything else?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night.